Hello y'all, I am Ryan Thurman from the Living and Learning Communities. Thank you for coming to our GenChem Study Session for your final exam for GenChem Study Sessions. Take it away, Dr. Taylor.
All right, so just another reminder, we are recording. And we'll get the recording up as soon as we can because we know time is of the essence. So Exam Four, so a reminder, since it is Sunday and tech, I always forget if this Sunday technically still counts as fall break or not. But fall break was last week, and so therefore everybody's brain has been on all kinds of wonderful fabulous things, but probably not a lot on chemistry. So a reminder, your next exam is Saturday, December 3rd at 10:00 a.m. Your rooms will all be the same. So and remember, don't be late, so be on time or be early. Because remember, if someone does leave the exam room, we have to shut down the exam and let no new people enter. And last time that was about 10:15 or 10:20, it was early. So be be early, be early all that time. I know it's getting cold outside, I know all those things are issues, but do make sure that you are on time and early. While I am making general announcements, another reminder, so Saturday, December 10th, that is the following week, at 8:00 p.m. is your final exam. Yes, it is at 8:00 p.m. Yes, that is in the evening. You're going to have 2 hours and 45 minutes to take the final. And what, and this time begins just like your other time. So for your regular exams, you've had 80 minutes to take those exams. And y'all are already familiar with the fact that some TAs pass out materials relatively quickly. And some of y'all start a regular exam like five minutes after the official start time. And some of you are familiar that some of you start the exam later. But everybody gets 80 minutes from the beginning. So in that exact same vein, your exam official start time is 8:00 p.m. That's when we start instructions, that's when we start to pass things out. And everyone's going to have 2 hours and 45 minutes to take the exam. So when you're thinking about timing and you're thinking about how you're going to get home afterwards, realize that that is going to be a late night. So y'all are usually going to go home somewhere whenever you finish the exam. For those of y'all that take the whole time around 11:00 p.m., yes, it's late. I usually get home, I usually get to leave after midday. So maybe by midnight, that would, that would be early. Your final exam, so you remember, is cumulative. And the final exam will be all multiple choice. Your exam this Saturday is not, we are still aiming for mostly multiple choice, just like we've done before, and two short answer. What those short answers will be, I'm not sure. But that's, so that's what we're headed for. So this is, the next two weeks are going to be intense, they're going to be intense. So back on Exam Four. So what on earth is on Exam Four? So the syllabus just says that Exam Four covers Chapter Nine, Chapter 10, and Chapter 11. I have a couple of caveats for all of those. But some of these are kind of odd. What I mean by that is, I was looking at this to try to make, to try to see if I could be concise with this. So the weird thing is that there are some things that we did not cover and some things that we will not test on. Most of those, however, are not whole sections. So they're difficult to point out, but I'm going to go ahead and do my best anyway. So in Chapter Nine, in Redux, we are, we covered Redux. We will test you on Redux, but there's a few things we're not going to do. So we're not going to do anything that involves the Activity Series. We didn't cover this, it's also not an Alex. What this would actually let you do is this would let you predict products in Redux. It would let you predict oxidation reduction products, that's what that does. We didn't cover it, so you actually can't predict any products in a Redux reaction. We're going to save that for GenChem Two, so we will cover it, but we're going to cover it later. We also didn't cover balancing Redux reactions. So balancing oxidation reduction reactions actually has special rules because you are supposed to balance the electrons in addition to balancing all of the elements. So Redux reactions actually do have an additional component that in balancing, which we're also going to save for GenChem Two, so that's also not covered. Also not covered is something that we really saved for your labs. So it's in the textbook, if you see it, no serial dilutions. Now, we did cover regular dilutions, so we did cover, so fair game. Fair game, we absolutely did cover M1V1 equals M2V2 and dilutions. And we can definitely take a look at that equation in just a minute. But there's a term called serial dilutions, which really all that is, is you just do the same dilution over and over and over again. So you can get to really small numbers, really small concentrations. Okay, and that's, that's my list for Chapter Nine. In Chapter 10, this one, we actually do have a whole section, no 10.8. So some people will cover 10.8, this is lattice energy. Some people will cover 10.8 because it's a really lovely example of Hess's law, and it ties together a lot of concepts from thermodynamics really beautifully. So some people will go ahead and cover it because it can be a really nice discussion piece, but we won't test specifically over lattice energy. And then, Chapter 11, which I know Dr. Cyber and I have not actually started yet. Technically, I gave my class like a five-minute introduction to Chapter 11 on Friday. But come on, that was, that was a while ago, we'll see who remembers that. So Chapter 11 is all about gases. And there's two things we're not going to cover, and again, they're not whole sections. So we are going to do not collecting gas over water. Really, what's happening is, this is one very specific example, and that we're simply not going to cover. Because covering this particular setup and this particular experiment in a way that will actually make sense usually takes about half of a class. And it's a lot more valuable to cover some of the more general topics that is required for that without doing the gas over water. So again, the weird thing is that there's other things in that same section that we are covering. And then there's a really specific example that involves the phrase collecting gas over water, and that's what we're taking out. The other thing, and this is another one of those odd parts, because we're not going to do effusion calculations. But can do conceptually. So your textbook, I believe, has an equation for calculating a rate of effusion. I realize for a lot of you, you haven't heard of the term effusion before. You may have heard the term diffusion. So effusion does in fact describe how a gas moves, how fast a gas moves into a vacuum. And because it's moving into a vacuum and there's no other particles in the way, you can actually describe that with mathematics. And your textbook does, and we have in the past, but not this year. So, but you can still talk about it conceptually because you can still talk about the speed of a gas conceptually really well. And that still does apply in specific circumstances such as effusion. So you're still talking about a gas moving, just a gas moving in a particular way. So that's, that's the summary of what's coming up on Exam Four. One thing, if you hadn't noticed, I guess I should have gone over the big, the general big topics. So Chapter Nine is what we call aqueous chemistry. So this is all about chemistry happening in water. So acids and bases and precipitation reactions, reactions and oxidation reduction, and electrolytes, and as well as some mathematics that go with that, with molality and dilutions. Chapter 10 is all about thermodynamics. So that's where we covered things like the First Law of Thermodynamics. Energy can be neither created nor destroyed, energy is always conserved, talked about in full P. So that idea of the heat energy of a reaction, or specifically the heat of a reaction, as long as you're at constant pressure. Speaking of that, we had things like calorimetry, and we did constant pressure calorimetry and constant volume calorimetry. And then there were three different ways to calculate in full P. Hess's law, pizza formation, bond in full P's. And then Chapter 11 is all gases. And this is the stuff that most folks have not gone to yet. But a lot of this involves a particular equation, may remember from high school, PV equals NRT. But we'll also talk about descriptions of gases as well. So, any questions so far?
All right, looks like we got a few so far. The first one is, can we go over number 13 from the practice exam?
Okay, what are the other questions?
All right, next one is question four on the practice exam.
Okay.
After that, what are the steps for writing molecular, ionic, and net ionic equations?
Okay, fabulous.
Next is titration questions? Now, can you go over titration questions? I don't know if I'm saying that right?
The, what is, what is that again?
T-I-T-R-A-T-I-O-N.
Got it. Fabulous. No, it's one of those fun games that between like, how, how people might like spell it in the chat. And, and I frankly was hearing a D, but like the, the letter like D isn't dog like somewhere in that word. I was like, what? So that's also, that's also my hearing kind of a problem. Got it. Yeah, we put a, a long, a long I on there and call them titrations, but yeah, no, I got it. Me, 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 me not hearing the, me not hearing the correct consonants was not helping our situation. Okay, other things so far.
And there's over 15 on the 2019 exam.
Okay.
And the next, last one, actually, wait. Next one is, how do we find the concentrations of ions in final solutions after mixing two solutions, given concentration and volume of each?
Okay.
Uh, next one says, can you go over what we should memorize? Then there's, next one, can you go over question 18 on the practice exam?
Okay.
What kind of mathematical equations will appear on the exam?
Okay.
And looks at the last, but the moment is, can we go over question 12 from practice exam?
Sure. Okay, cool, gives me a place to start. All right, so tell you what I'm going to do. Let's talk briefly about equations and memorization stuff. And I've got a couple of examples. And then we'll hit some of the things on the 2019 exam and we'll see where we are. Because honestly, I wouldn't be surprised if a lot of these are the gas questions. But I don't know yet, I haven't, I haven't looked. Okay, so first of all, actually, I will go ahead, did I, oh, of course not. I was trying to make sure that all of the software was going to work properly. And so I restarted my computer before everything. So I'm like, I was just on eLearning, certainly eLearning is still up and I'm still logged in. No, because I restarted my computer to make sure Teams was going to work properly. Good news, bad news. Where is the thing I want? I would like the 2019 exams, there they are. So what I actually want out of this first is, I want to actually show you and remind you that one of the things that the 2019 does always give you is an idea of the potentially useful information that we will give you on the exam. So while there's a lot of things it doesn't have, like the periodic table's not on here, but by now, y'all know the periodic table that we give you. We have given you three, at least three of them on Exams One, Two, and Three. You've seen the periodic table that we give you. Which means this is your, your potentially useful information on Exam Four. So you've got Avogadro's number, you've got the Bohr constant that we haven't used since Exam One. You've got the speed of light that we haven't used since Exam One. Planck's constant that we haven't used since Exam One. The definition of a joule, which I haven't used at all. Information about electrons, protons, and neutrons, and charges, and inches, and feet, miles, and AMU. And hey, here's some slightly new things down here. There is a calorie, and it's definition of a calorie to a joule. There's a Newton, there is also a Pascal, and there's a whole bunch of atmosphere to other pressure units. So an atmosphere is a unit of pressure, so is this mmHg, that's millimeters of mercury. So is a tor, PA stands for Pascal. Bar is for a bar, I forget how that, exactly that works. And PSI is technically pounds per square inch, how we measure tire pressure in the United States. And then there's also R, which is a gas con, is the gas constant. And then there's also down here, how you go from Celsius to Kelvin in temperature. Granted, the Activity Series is something you actually won't see on this exam because, as I mentioned earlier, we're not doing the Activity Series. I understand, I'm probably going to answer that question at least one more time, and that's totally fine, because I understand the like, are you sure we don't need that? So totally fine. But, so my point though is that there are some new things that are going to be on that potentially useful information page that will be available to you. But there's some things that you might notice are not here that you're also going to need. So let's mention some of those things. Too many buttons, this button. Just make a new page. Exam Four, memorize. So we're just going to add things to this as we go along. We'll see how many things I can remember off the top of my head. Out of Chapter Nine, though. So things you might have noticed were not on that list, strong acids and strong bases. You have to have those memorized. So let's see where I'm doing on the PowerPoints and where those are. Oh no, I restarted the computer. The other thing that we're also going to want out of Chapter Nine for memorizing is you're also going to need to memorize your solubility rules. I know no one's excited about that, but those are things you have to have memorized. The other thing to remind you is, is that things like your polyatomic ions are always fair game. They have been since you learned them in the first place. And they do tend to come back around now because this is the time where we can say things like sodium phosphate. And you should be able to recognize what is sodium phosphate as you're looking at everything. There's going to be more things as we come along. Maybe PowerPoint will never open, that's fine. There we go, always make fun of something. Programs, okay, that's my gases, I would like Chapter Nine. Look at there eventually. But this will let me pull my solubility rules and my strong acids and strong bases. So different people have different examples of strong acids and strong bases. You can actually see on here that I actually had a couple added to this. But we're just going to go with seven strong acids and eight strong bases and call it a day. Makes our life a little bit easier. And that way, it's the thing out of the textbook, which also makes the clarity a bit easier on this. So we do expect y'all to have memorized your seven strong acids and your eight strong bases. Please do note that your strong bases correspond really lovely with the periodic table. So if you have not pulled up periodic table and looked at how your strong bases correspond to those, I do recommend that, it'll help. Then the other thing I mentioned, where are solubility rules? These are the things that no one likes. There we go. Solubility rules, also more tables out of your textbook. Actually, it's basically every section, every section's got something to memorize. So acids and bases, precipitation, and there actually is something out of Redux you need to. So these are solubility guidelines. So basically, there are things that are, this is a table of things that are usually soluble. So when we say things are usually soluble, we do in fact mean aqueous, usually aqueous. So all your alkali metals, always soluble, no matter what. And then we've got a list of things, and this one, we are actually going to take and add those additions to, and I'll show you why. Then there's a set of stuff that is usually insoluble. So my insoluble compounds, those are going to be the ones that are typically solids. Now, the soluble exceptions for these are the alkali metals. So essentially, plus the ammonium ion. So essentially, what happened is they set up here, hey, here are things that are always soluble, and there are no exceptions. And so then when we're like, hey, by the way, down here, these are things that are usually not soluble. So the things that are, that will make those soluble are the things that the top table told you were always soluble. So those things go together. Then, the other thing on the exceptions, I do want to point out because we do actually add two exceptions in here, which are calcium and strontium. Because essentially, what we want to go ahead and say is that the hydroxide ion is usually insoluble except for your strong bases. Your strong bases are the soluble exceptions for hydroxide. That's the goal. So your insoluble compounds, so yes, there is some memorization. Spend some time with it, will hopefully help out. So yes, you are going to have to remember carbonate, phosphate, chromate, sulfide ion. Yes, you're going to have to remember what things are the exceptions up here. Yes, you will need all of that. The other thing that, a lot of times when I'm thinking about what to memorize, I don't always count this because this is a priority list. But this is out of the oxidation reduction values. And what this is, is out of the Redux chapter, there's a table that will, there's a table that basically gives you priority when you're doing oxidation numbers. So frankly, I don't really think that you need to memorize the, this. I, I don't think that that's worth it. Sometimes it's helpful to people to see what those exceptions are, but you do not need to memorize that. What you need to remember or have memorized, and sometimes this is mostly something that you'll get with practice without actually needing to straight memorize, is the fact that fluorine is the most important one. And then group 1A or 2A metals, and then hydrogen, and then oxygen, and then group 7A. So this is a priority ranking of elements that whenever you're assigning oxidation numbers, this is the order you use. A lot of times, you don't need this, to be honest. So for example, a lot of times you're doing something like sodium fluoride. And for something like sodium fluoride, we're going to grab a periodic table. Yes, I'm just going to use the internet again. I always intend to take myself off of the wifi because I have a hard line connection, but it's fine. So sodium is hanging out as a group of 1A metal, so it should have plus one. Fluorine is a halogen, should have a negative one. As far as assigning oxidation numbers go, since this is an ionic compound, we should treat it like it's an ionic compound. Technically, we do the fluorine first and then the sodium, but it doesn't matter because this one plays really lovely and by the rules. So fluoride, fluorine's negative one, sodium's positive one, those cancel each other out. Life is good, and you could treat this like an ionic compound and go on down the road. The only real time where you have to worry about this is when you have things that are both in the table and you have to make a choice. For example, let's say that we had the hypochlorite ion. I now have oxygen and I have chlorine. They are, so when I want to use the periodic table, I have two non-metals. Oxygen should be negative two, according to periodic table. Chlorine should be negative one, according to the periodic table. But this has an overall charge of negative one, it's right there. So they both can't be negative, because then I would have just a whole bunch of negatives. So here is the part where the table actually comes into play because with, the question becomes, which one matters more, the oxygen or the chlorine? One of them is going to essentially win or get their way and use the normal value that we would think of with the periodic table. And the other one copes, the other one deals with it. The other one has a different oxidation number to make the math work out. So to finish this one off, oxygen is on the table, so is chlorine. But oxygen's higher on the table, so oxygen gets the priority. So oxygen is negative two, there's only one oxygen, the whole thing has to equal negative one. So now I need something minus two that would equal negative one, that's just going to be positive one. So my chlorine here has an oxidation number or oxidation state of positive one. So those are the times where the table comes in handy is when you're trying to think of, oh gosh, now I have things that I think I should just be able to use the periodic table for everything. But some of them, I'm supposed to figure out, how do I know which ones I use the periodic table for and which ones I have to do a little bit of math to figure out? The table tells you. So that's the use of having this table kind of memorized, is the fact that then it tells you which ones you need and in what order. Thinking. So there are probably other things to memorize. But those are like the big tables out of Chapter Nine. So I don't promise that this is everything, because I've usually forgotten something. I'm going to keep this tab and we'll see what gets added to it. Oh, look, I said polyatomic ions, I'm glad I remembered that five minutes ago, 10 minutes ago. But we'll see what gets added. Okay, so as far as equations go, we will try to list some as we go along. Equations are definitely one of those that personally I struggle with because there's a lot of times where we have calculations that are not equations. But there are some actual equations, there are some. So we'll see if we can make a list of those as we go along, we'll see how far we get. But we won't be giving you any on the exam, just like always. So use that potentially useful information to figure, to figure out what we are going to give you. Okey dokey. Let's go ahead and do molecular, ionic, net ionic, let's do this one. For a couple of reasons. One, because I actually prepared an example. As I flip desperately through my notes, there we go. Like, I know I did, there it is. Okay, so I'm going to do an acid-base reaction. So first of all, we are going to use a term called the molecular equation. This, by the way, it's just the chemical reaction. But now that we're going to also have ionic reactions and net ionic reactions, we're going to give everything a name. So the original one, the one we've been using this whole time, is going to be called the chemical reaction. So I'm going to go with this one. This is oxalic acid, by the way, that is the polyatomic, polyatomic ion oxalate. Then, and we'll talk a little bit about how we know. That's sodium hydroxide, that is one of your strong bases that you're going to have memorized. that you're going to have memorized. That therefore is sodium oxalate and water. Now, a couple of things. Um, so what we're going to do is the goal is going to be to write the ionic equation. When we write out the ionic equation, we go ahead and we write out all strong electrolytes as ions in our ionic equation. Now, because the goal, the goal of an ionic equation is to try to represent what's happening in solution. So as we go from left to right, we need to identify what these things are. So this thing is not one of your strong acids, but uh, it's got this H in front. This is a weak acid. So you are going to memorize your strong acids and things that are not strong but are still acids, things that have a hydrogen in front, things that we tell you are acids. Um, things that have, uh, COOH as a group. Uh, also acids. Uh, it's a weak acid. This is a weak electrolyte. While this does ionize in solution, you get like one out of a thousand to ionize. So because so few of them ionize, um, like one in a thousand uh, will ionize. Or one in 10,000 or one million, small number. Because it's so few of them, when we write out the ionic equation, we keep that one all together. So it's weird because it's aqueous and it dissolves. But when we actually see it in solution, most of this, going to reuse the generic acid for this, uh, most of these are all together. Uh, I am not going to write 99 of these just to show you one that separates. Um, so when we write the ionic equation, we're trying to represent the majority. So we are going to go ahead and write what happens the majority of the time. And a weak acid stays together, keeps its covalent bonds, but weak acid does not ionize most of the time in solution. So we're going to represent that in the ionic equation. So I understand that that one in a thousand is impressive, but the one in a million is really cool. We're representing the majority in chemistry. Um, I am also going to keep all my balancing. I am also going to write all of the state symbols. For those of you in my section, you know that sometimes I forget to do that or just don't because of time and space. Uh, but sodium hydroxide, this is a strong base, strong base, strong electrolyte. That's one of the ones you've gotten, you've got to memorize. Uh, so that one gets to stay. Uh, and then this other stuff. Um, sodium oxalate. That sodium, um, is always soluble. Sodium is always soluble. So this is a strong electrolyte. This is a highly soluble compound. Two sodiums, aqueous plus two oxalate ions. Water. It's a liquid. Stays all together. Uh, if I had any solids, solids would also stay all together. Uh, your state symbols here are going to be helpful to you because even if it looks like, oh, maybe it could separate, watch for the state symbol because every once in a while we'll have like a solid in the product or we'll have a solid in the reactant. And if it's a solid, you're just going to assume that that is a rock. The rock also stays all together. So this is water. The water is also going to stay all together. This was a lot of stuff to write out. This is perhaps personally my least favorite thing about ionic and net ionic equations, uh, is because they're just kind of long. So now in my netic equation, what I'm going to do is I'm going to remove um, species that are exactly the same on both sides. Now I've got to actually find something that's exactly the same. So notice that while it's really tempting to be like, ooh, C two O four, C two O four. On the reactant side of this, that is held as an acid and it's neutral. On the right-hand side of this and the product side, this is held as an ion. Those don't cancel. It's tempting. It's really tempting, but they have to be exactly the same. Um, but for exactly the same, I've got two sodium ions and I got two sodium ions. These, these are exactly the same. So these I can get rid of. Um, these, by the way, are by spectator ions. Spectation. Good job. Spectator, spectator ions. And sometimes we just ask for spectator ions. So also a good term to know. Uh, but that's the thing that I'm going to get rid of because it's the same on both sides. Everything else I just copy down. Uh, da 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 da. So that's my net ionic equation. Notice that my net ionic equation is still balanced. So my net ionic equation is balanced. Even though we got rid of some stuff, still balances in the end. Uh, I also should double check because I see a lot of twos as stoichiometric coefficients. But you'll notice that I don't have a two in front of the oxalic acid, so I can leave it just like it is. Uh, if everything had a two, I would actually want to go ahead and simplify that. Uh, but I just have mostly twos as stoichiometric coefficients. I don't have to. The other thing to just go ahead and double check is, is that everything is different. So I didn't forget a spectator ion somewhere in there, even though I was copying everything. And something is interesting or different. So I have two different things in here that help me know I did this correctly. One, I have a weak acid in the reactants. So that weak acid in the reactants does have to be there. It has to be there just like it is. Uh, and I made water as a product. So these two different components will also lend themselves to a net ionic reaction. Weak acid and water formation. So there is an example of molecular ionic net ionic. Um, now, one of the other things that some people will go ahead and do um, that works really well for precipitation reactions. But I went ahead and started with this slightly more complicated one with weak acids. Um, because the way that we teach you to do this is to do it this way where we start off with a molecular, we break everything down into an ionic reaction. We remove the spectator ions. Uh, and then whatever is remaining is your net ionic reaction. That's the way we teach you to do it. And that is necessary, especially when you have a weak acid present because it's, it's easy to mess up otherwise. Now granted, there are definitely folks that when you're doing precipitation reactions, which is where this topic typically gets introduced, that'll give you some different advice. Um, so let's go ahead and do one of those examples as well, just to see what on earth I'm talking about. Here is lead to nitrate and potassium chloride. And that's all they're going to give us. That's it. That's all at the end. Um, so first of all, we also have to make the products. Uh, so as we're making the products that we need to go ahead and do, this is also that part where polyatomic ions comes into play. Because we should know what the charges on that lead. The only way we're going to know the charges on the lead is if I have this charge of nitrate memorized, it's negative one. Um, and really all we're going to be doing here is we are going to swap uh, the cations and anions. So where originally I had lead connected to nitrate, lead is now going to hang out with chlorine. And where nitrate was with lead, now nitrate is going to hang out with potassium. So then I need to make my new pairs. So now I'm going to have lead chloride together. And I'm going to have my potassium nitrate. So those are my new products. I also need to analyze these new products with solubility rules. Which you're going to have memorized, but just in case we want to take a look at how those charts worked. Um, so I've got nitrate. I've got all kinds of crap. Um, I'm going to start off with the potassium. Um, so I'm hopping back over to that list of things we need to have memorized. Uh, so one of the things is things are always soluble. And hey, look, there's potassium and nitrate and there's no exceptions for any of those. So anywhere I can find potassium, anywhere I can find nitrate, I get to put an AQ symbol by that. Anytime, everywhere. Um, oh, look, so here's nitrate and the AQ symbol. Here's potassium and the AQ symbol. Uh, here's potassium and nitrate and there's the AQ symbol. I didn't balance this. Oh, now I did. Um, oh, but I need, I need help on this chloride thing. So I'm going to come back over here. And where is chloride? Oh, there's chloride. Compounds containing chloride usually soluble, but not always. Uh, so it's either silver, uh, mercury one or lead two, that is insoluble. And sure enough, wouldn't you know it, lead two. So this is a solid. So solubility rules, you can figure out what those products are by doing ion swapping. Uh, and then solubility rules will tell you which one is a solid. Then as far as ionic reactions go, if the goal is net ionic and that's the only goal, um, a lot of people will tell you that all you're going to do is you take the solid and look at what you need to make the solid. Uh, to make the solid, I need lead and chloride. And we're done. So that, that can be an option, especially if it's a precipitation reaction. If you can't figure out if it's a precipitation reaction or if something else is going on, um, then I recommend that you do it the long way because it's better to do it the long way and get things correct uh, than it is to use a shortcut and miss out on the question because you missed the weak acid. Um, this doesn't have any weak acids in it. Uh, and if the only thing I need is a net ionic reaction, then you can use the shortcut by just saying, hey, I know what I need to make. I need to make the solid. What do I need to make the solid? And I'm done. So there are some shortcuts depending on what you're looking for. You just got to know what the, uh, problems are with the shortcuts. Okay. So I've been talking for about a half an hour. Um, any questions so far over what I've covered?
So a few new ones came in.
Okay.
A new one is, should we, should we also know weak acid or bases?
Okay.
Um, how do you figure out oxidation numbers?
Okay.
Uh, can you go over the relationship between state and path functions when dealing with the energy and heat equation?
Okay.
Um, will we have to know how to do the, how to do s- solutions, uh, stoichiometry? And also know how to balance simple, uh, Redux equations?
Okay, other things.
All right, uh, shh. Uh, someone said, shouldn't there only be one oxalate ion on the product side? Probably in reference to something that was.
Oh, yeah, sorry. You're right. That's the reason why I want to take questions now. Thank you. Yep.
Next is.
It was, if I just looked at my notes, my notes were right. You definitely see the pen mark where I really wanted to write that too there though. Sorry about that, y'all. Yes, thank you for catching my balancing. Balance the reaction, Dr. Taylor. Balance the reaction. Uh, all right, other, other things.
Another, another one probably similar was, um, why is there two C two O four?
Yeah, because I got in a hurry. That would be why. Other things?
You know, I next was, are the correction terms to pressure and volume in chapter 11 theory, or are we expected to apply math to it?
Okay.
I believe that's all for now.
Okay. Uh, all right. Yeah. So for those of you that, so I, I went, I went through and erased it really quickly. Uh, but the, the point they were trying to make is, is that when I was doing my first example and I use sodium oxalate over here, when I broke it down, I balanced it wrong. Uh, so good catch, good catch. So there should only be one oxalate ion here because there's only one here. So there should only be one here um, in, in the product side, and there should definitely only be one in the final answer where I had written two. Uh, so my apologies on that one. So good catch, y'all. Good catch. Um, so wherever there is an oxalate ion, I even paused and it was like, and it should be balanced and mine was not balanced. Oh, irony. It's right in the notes I made beforehand. I should look at those. Um, took the time to write it out ahead of time and I should use those notes. Um, so a couple of things I can hit quickly. Um, Redux balancing, that's no. No. That's no. Um, as far as weak acids and bases, yes, yes, you do need to be able to recognize weak acids and bases. The hard thing is that there's no list to memorize. Um, so really the way you're going to know that it's a weak acid is that it's not a strong one. Uh, and you're just going to know that it's an acid two ways. Uh, one, if there's an H in front of it, so HF is an acid because of the hydrogen in front, but it's not a strong one because it's not on the list. Um, but there's a lot of different, there's a lot of different acids. Um, and so we don't ask you to memorize all of the weak acids ever because, um, you can't. It's painful. There's too many of them. So hydrogen in front tells you. The other way you can also know this though is, is that if there is a this group back here, COOH, that's a carboxylic acid group. So knowing that COOH is also an acid can help you. Um, that's actually the proton that comes off to give you an acid. Uh, so you can actually do things. BH three COOH. And this back part is the acid. Uh, as far as weak bases, the main one to know for a weak base is NH three ammonia is a weak base. The other things that are weak bases are things that look like ammonia. Things that have the uh, lone pair here. So the lone pair on the nitrogen makes it a weak base. So if I take the same formula, but I change it and now I put a carbon with hydrogens there, this is also a weak base. Looks just like ammonia. Uh, this however, looks like this. This is CH three NH two. So weak bases are a little bit trickier. They're not quite as obvious, but you should basically memorize ammonia as a weak base. It's the one we by far use the most often. Uh, and then there's a couple of other options in there. But nitrogen, nitrogen is going to be the key to weak bases. Um, but it should be neutral, nitrogen, but neutral because of that lone pair. Because of that lone pair. With that. Oxidation numbers. Uh, so we do Redux balancing, oxidation numbers. I already did that. Um, we'll do one more example of oxidation numbers, but I already covered oxidation numbers, although I know I did it fast. Um, let's do something more complicated. Um, what's more complicated? Hmm. Nobody likes things like chromium. People hate chromium. Let's do chromium. Um. There. Ah, wait, no. Only get better. Um, no, 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 be good, be good, be good. Uh, this one. Okay. Um. So. Oxidation numbers for everything in this. Really, we're gonna use this table again that I mentioned in the beginning. Um, so basically, I've got sodium, I've got oxygen, I've got chromium. There's a priority to this. So I'm gonna use group one A, that's my sodium hanging out, group one A. That gets a plus one. Oxygen, also in the table, gets a minus two, just like you would expect from the periodic table. So we're not making up anything special. Now, this whole thing is neutral. There's no charge on this. This is the one where people don't like this. Here we go. Um. So this is sodium. I have two sodiums, both at plus one, so that's an overall contribution of plus two. Then I have oxygen. I have four oxygens, each bringing to the table a negative two charge as a total contribution of negative eight. I need something that will make all of this equal zero. You can do the math, if you would like to do the math on this one. So I wind up with basically X, uh, negative eight plus two is negative six equals zero, X is equal to positive six. Oxidation numbers. The only time that these tend to get a little bit weird is when I have something like, uh, this guy. Um, this is really tempting to do the hydrogen first, but the hydrogen doesn't go first. Um. So this is group two A, comes before hydrogen on this list. There's calcium, calcium is group two A. So two A calcium gets the positive two. So now what I have is I have a plus two contribution, my one calcium, that all has to equal zero. I have two hydrogens. So therefore, as I do this math, I'll sort of bit of algebra out, two X is equal to negative two. Or X is equal to negative one. Each hydrogen has an oxidation number of negative one. So one thing to note when we're doing oxidation numbers is oxidation numbers are for each atom. They're for each atom, not for the element's contribution. So when I'm talking about negative two for the oxygen, I mean negative two for each oxygen. When I say negative one for a hydrogen, which is weird, it's not normal. Um. But that's for each individual hydrogen. Sodium plus one, that's for each sodium. Um. Alex should help you with oxidation numbers, with oxidation states. So do get some more practice in on that, but practice is usually what you guys need. I know it's really tempting to watch me do like fifteen of these. But you practicing is the thing you need for oxidation numbers. You practicing. End of chapter questions. Highly recommend end of chapter questions. Because who wrote their exam questions today? Me! Who was supposed to get them turned in yesterday? Me! Where did I look for inspiration? Key into chapter questions. Now the real question is, what sections did I write? Uh, oxidation numbers, done. Um, so, uh, state and path functions, this is another relative, I know I'm kind of ignoring some of these cuz they take longer. Um, so I'm trying to knock some of these out while I can do shorter ones. State and path functions. Um, so the person who wrote in that question asked specifically about them in particular equations. Here's the thing, those particular equations that they're referencing are the um, derivation for how we get to infalp. The derivation for how we get to infalp is really fun. It's really beautiful. I cover it because I don't like variables to come out of nowhere. But you don't need that derivation. Um, now, the thing that is useful is a state function versus a path function. So a state function is one where all you need is the beginning and the end. And how you got there doesn't matter. The thing is, almost everything that you've measured in the lab is a state function. Um, so this becomes difficult only because this is what we usually measure. Um, so mass, volume, temperature, um, energy. It's gonna be also infalp. They're all state functions, all of them. Uh, so this is, this is the hard thing, is, is that most of the things that you usually measured in a lab are state functions. That's why we measure them, because all you need is the beginning and the ending. And what happens in the middle, nobody cares about cuz it doesn't matter. So state functions are the thing we do the most by far. Path functions, uh, those are the other ones. Path functions are the ones where how you get there matters. The big examples here are work and heat. So this is that example where, um, so another example of a state function is something like distance. Um, in position. So for example, I could talk about going from my home to UTD. And I could just talk about the distance between those two points, uh, and I could calculate that on Google Maps, and it would give me a number. But that doesn't actually tell me how long it takes to get there. It doesn't actually tell me how much gas I'm gonna use in my car to get there. Because of the path, how I get there matters. Uh, so that's the whole thing with state functions and path functions is state functions, all you need is point A and point B, and that's it. Uh, path functions, how you get there matters. Um, and really, I'll go ahead and pull this up. Um. So really, all you need are some of those examples of each, but again, really, as far as those examples go, it's going to be most things you've ever measured in the lab. State functions, um, a couple really specific path functions. Um, so really what's happening, so this, this is the derivation of infalp, and really all sorry, I have my laptop set up to do, um. Uh, what's it called? Um, transcription, yeah. Um, and subtitles at the bottom, which is usually super valuable, uh, but not right now. There you go. Um, so what's, so what's happening in here is, uh, U is supposed to be energy. And that's really the thing we care about. P is supposed to be pressure. Also a state function. V is volume, also a state function. Um, so these here are, is actually a way to define work. So pressure, volume, pressure change in volume is work. Um, and basically what we're doing is we're taking this, which is heat at constant pressure. And we're just redefining it in terms of nothing but state functions, and since we can redefine it in terms of nothing but state functions, we can therefore define it as a state function, which is where infalp comes from. So infalp is the heat energy of a reaction at constant pressure by definition. That's where it comes from. So I'm not done yet. I can take more questions quite yet. Um, but I wanna point something out. And I'm still gonna get asked this question, and I will still answer this question, but people will ask. So when's the review for the final? Y'all, it's five PM. I've been talking for an hour, and I've covered like not even a little bit of chapter eleven. Uh, I've covered really random concepts out of chapter ten, and I've covered like two of the like four or five big things out of chapter nine. There is no way that I can do a final exam review and make it worth anyone's while. Uh, especially yours, honestly, because I'm struggling to make an exam for review be comprehensive and have important things in it because of how much stuff is in chapter, has in, is in the exam board. Um. The final makes that problem even worse, which is why all of these are recorded. So you have access to the recordings from all the previous exam reviews. So there is no final exam review, at least done by the instructors. Um, every once in a while, the SIs or the PLT leaders will decide to do one, uh, and that is their business, um, because it's a beast. Okay. Back to this. Um, what do I wanna do next? Actually, I wanna do real gases next. This, cuz I can actually do gases real fast. Um. So the person who asked about real gases didn't actually technically ask about real gases. Um, but here's the deal. We are gonna spend a lot of time talking about ideal gases, and when we talk about ideal gases, there will be an equation that describes them. PV equals NRT, where P is pressure and V is volume. And in is moles. R is constant. On the potentially useful information page, T is temperature in Kelvin. Has to be in Kelvin because zero degrees Celsius, we experience things equal to zero, and we can't have that. Otherwise, the moles of gas just vanish. No vanishing. Temperature in Kelvin, always positive number. Now here's the deal. Um. There's a couple of assumptions that we make about ideal gases that are wrong, but work really well. Um. So some assumptions that we make about ideal gases. Um, we assume that the gas particles have no volume. That's wrong. Right, that is absolutely wrong. Um. This is wrong, but works. Because as far as gases go, they're, they take up so little space in comparison to like the volume, cuz they just keep bouncing around like they're little particles, and they bounce around, and they hit the walls, and they hit another wall, and they hit another wall. Um, so like most of what the gases is, it's empty space. So the particles, teeny, 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 tiny, with a little amount of volume. So we usually don't care, honestly, about their volume, because most of it's empty space. Works great. But it's an assumption that we make. Um, the other assumption that we make is that, uh, the gases uh, do not uh, have intermolecular forces. No hydrogen bonding, I don't care what the gases, no London dispersion forces, don't care what the gases. Again, this is wrong, right? Um. This is wrong, uh, but it works. Uh, so we, we assume that they just keep going, and that they aren't attracted to each other ever. Um, again, we, we learned before that when you talk about anything that has an electron cloud, has London dispersion forces, I don't care what it is. Uh, and that's true. So these are assumptions that we make that are wrong, but work beautifully. Now, the thing is, uh, is that these work. But when I say it works, these work at high temperatures and low pressures. They also work wherever humans exist. So if a human is happy, even though they've got that's fine, that's a person, just deal with it. Um, so if, if you can walk around safely, ideal gases work fine. Um, this does actually also work at much higher temperatures and lower pressures than humans are fine at. But that's the thing, is that if the temperature increases, gases are still gases. The pressure decreases, gases are still gases, it's fine. Um, this starts to break. Uh, so these, so these assumptions stop working. Assumptions don't work, honestly, when your gas starts to condense into a liquid. That's when it stops working. Um, so, and this usually happens at low temperatures or high pressures. So either the temperature is low enough, but the gas particles are slowing down. As the gas particles slow down, instead of racing past each other, they go in a lot slower, so they tend to feel those attractions to each other. And so as they sort of feel those attractions to each other, they're gonna kind of glomp together more. Or as the pressure increases, usually there's so much space in between them that it doesn't matter, but as you increase the pressure, those gas particles have no choice, but they get closer and closer and closer to each other. And as they get closer and closer and closer to each other, with the increased pressure, you're also starting to assume that there's not as much empty space anymore. So suddenly, the volume of those gas particles actually matters, uh, because you're smushing them in together. So that volume actually starts to have meaning. So what the other thing that this means, and this finally gets to this person's question, um, is that when you're talking about an ideal gas versus a real gas, there, these assumptions break. And so there are mathematical factors that would fix it. We're not gonna test you on those mathematical factors. But because these are the assumptions that are wrong, you should be able to think your way through this. Um, so the two things that are gonna be wrong is go, are going to be the volume. Um, so an ideal gas assumes that gas particles don't have any volume. Which is wrong. So if you're trying to think about a real gas, so a real gas, um, the volume of the particles is important. And so therefore, you expect the real gas to show an increased volume from the ideal gas, cuz the ideal gas assumes that the gas particles have a volume equal to zero. So the ideal gas is just assuming that that's not there. That's not true. It is there. So the real gas would have a larger volume than the ideal gas. As far as the forces, this is the part where a real gas is gonna have intermolecular forces. What that means is as those particles are zooming by each other, that's zooming, by the way, uh, they're gonna feel an attraction in here. So as they feel that attraction in there, they're actually gonna move a little slower. And they're gonna hit the wall with a little less force, which means that the pressure is actually gonna go down. Um, so the pressure is actually a little bit decreased. Ideal gases, you assume no intermolecular forces, so you have, um, a little bit of an inflated idea or of a higher pressure. So, and again, there's equations to describe that. We don't use the equations. Um, the most common question we actually usually ask about is not necessarily this theory, but is usually actually when you have, you have to worry about it. Because this is, this is one of those few times where we're like, honestly, you need these correction factors, you can look it up, uh, in your regular adult life. Um, so this is the part that we usually care about, um, is how you know when you need to care, um, which is oh, gosh, that pink is really hard to read. Um. No one usually use yellow. Um. So that the ideal gas assumptions do not work as the gas is condensing into a liquid, which is at low temperatures and high pressures. This is the part we usually actually test you on. Um, so yeah, so no, no equations on ideal, real, I, on, bah. No equations on real gases. Let's see how I'm doing. Cool, I did real gases, because that's faster. Everybody else ask for math things? Let's do some math things. Ah, can I do? Hmm. Can I roll all these into one massively long problem? Yes, I can. Okay. This is probably a bad idea, I might stop halfway through. Let's do a titration. Let's do a titration problem. Um, so, titration problem. Uh, I will make this bigger in a moment. So what volume in milliliters of a 0.12 molar sodium hydroxide solution is required to fully neutralize 27.2 milliliters of a 77 molar sulfuric acid solution? Um, and, so one would just know what sulfuric acid is, it is this thing, H2SO4. Um, this does have language in it to tell us that it is a titration question, it's right here, it says fully neutralized. So fully neutralized is trying to tell you that they expect all of the protons and the acid to be neutralized by a hydroxide from the base. Um, so those moles should be equal to those moles. So moles of protons, individual proton should be equal to moles of hydroxide. This is not moles of acid equal to moles of the base, because this is a polyprotic acid. There are two protons for every acid out of this. So the fast way won't work. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and write out an equation for this. Now, there's two different ways to think through titration problems. I'm going to go ahead and do the way that involves a chemical reaction. Um, what I'm going to do is I write out this chemical reaction, is I'm actually doing the same thing that we did when we talked about precipitation reactions. Um, and I am thinking through this, uh, as an ion swapping. So now I'm going to have my sodium with the phosphate, I'm going to have the hydrogen with the hydroxide. Um, HOH is in fact water as liquid, uh, and the other one is sodium sulfate. And I can go ahead and balance this, two sodiums, two right there. Um, now, one of the other things that you might notice is that all I have are a bunch of milliliters and similarities. Uh, I'm asked for volume in the end. So, but I can just essentially use the reaction, uh, for that stoichiometry. But in order to use this, definitely the two right there, uh, but in order to use my reaction stoichiometry, because essentially I'm asked for volume of sodium hydroxide. And they gave me all the information I could use about sulfuric acid. So I could use stoichiometry to go from sulfuric acid to NaOH, as long as I had moles. So moles are the thing that I need in order to do that. Uh, this big capital M is moles, is molarity, means it's in moles per liter. I'm going to use this like an equation, excuse me. Um, so for sulfuric acid, it tells me I have point seven seven molar. Uh, I'm going to solve for moles, it gave, it gave me 27.2 milliliters. I'm going to change that to liters. So all I'm going to do is look at my notes. Sorry. Did this problem in advance, so I wouldn't mess up. Uh, so I'm going to use the notes I did, I'm not going to grab my calculator and do it from scratch. Be smart. Sorry, talking to myself. So there's my moles of my sulfuric acid. So point seven seven times point zero two seven two should be point oh two oh nine four four. So now that I have moles of sulfuric acids, what I'm going to do now is say that since I have moles of sulfuric acid, but the question asked me about um, sodium hydroxide, I'm going to go ahead and use my balanced chemical reaction that I had to make myself to say that there is for every one mole of H2SO4, there are two moles of sodium hydroxide. So this means that I'm looking for a grand total of zero four one eight 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 moles sodium hydroxide. So I found out how many moles I needed. By the way, we could also call this solution stoichiometry, haha. Uh, because all that solutions stoichiometry really means is that instead of being given grams or moles, they gave me molarity and volume. So that this is a solution stoichiometry problem because of what they gave me, because of how I started. Um, the goal is volume. Um, and they gave me the molarity, so all I'm going to do is I'm going to again use molarity like it's an equation. So now that I'm looking at sodium hydroxide, uh, I have 0.12 molar and that should be equal to still moles divided by liters. Uh, except now I have moles, is what I have, point zero four one eight 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 moles. Uh, I'm solving for liters. So then I'm just going to divide my moles by the molarity in order to pull that off, so liters should be equal to, I'm just keeping that liters there so that I know what my final unit should be in. Also, for those of you that like to work in millimoles, you are welcome to work in millimoles. I just never got in the habit, um, so therefore I don't use it. But I understand that Alex does and it, you should get the same answer. 349 milliliters. NaOH. Ta-da. So technically, that is solution stoichiometry and a titration reaction. Ah-ha. Now, since we have all of these numbers, what if, what if I had been asked, using all the math, because we, look at all the numbers we made. What if, from this question, what if they'd asked me a different question? What if they'd asked me, um, what is the final concentration of sodium ions? Now, there's a couple of things about this question that needs to be true. One, final. It could also ask me for the original. But if it asked me for the original, I'm, I'm going to use different information. So look for what it's asking, is it asking for final or original? Um, and then I am asking for sodium ions. The reason I'm asking for sodium ions is this is one of those always soluble things, no matter what, that should be a spectator ion. So the reason why I care about that is scrolling back up again. Um, is when I'm thinking through this equation, um, my sodium's not going to get trapped in this water. Right? The, this, the sodium ion isn't part of water, it's not the, it's not the hydrogen, it's not the oxygen, it's not trapped in the water. Uh, and I could actually go ahead and do, um, actually don't want to do my net ionic reaction for this. No, I don't. Um. But the sodium, because sodium's an always soluble thing, uh, it will be a spectator ion, so I won't actually have to worry about it, I should have done something different, it's okay. Um, but, so what I can go ahead and do is calculate how much sodium should be in the solution in the end. Now, in order to do that, the other thing I'm going to have to do is, so what I need, I need concentration, so when I say concentration, this should have said in molarity. So I'm looking for molarity, but just of sodium. So I'm looking for moles divided by liters, okay, molarity, still moles divided by liters. So I need moles of sodium. The nice thing about my moles of sodium is the moles of sodium only come from one place, which is this point one two molar solution. Which, we figured out the volume right here. So I could again say I've got my 0.12 molar sodium hydroxide solution. Uh, and then I can go ahead and say that I have a certain number of moles of my sodium hydroxide solution when I have 0.349 liters. Uh, we've technically already done this math, it's up here, um, so I am just copying this. Um, zero four one eight 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 moles sodium hydroxide. Now, I'm saying sodium hydroxide, but sodium hydroxide is a strong base, which means it ionizes 100% into sodium and hydroxide. And for every one mole of sodium hydroxide, I in fact have one mole of sodium. Um, that stoichiometry is not always one to one. So if I had something different, like I had calcium hydroxide, um, my hydroxides, I'd have two of those, or if I had something like sodium phosphate, um, I'd have three phosphates for every one sodium, so it's, so that stoichiometry is not always the same, but in this case it is just a one to one ratio. Um, so that means that I actually have 0.041888 moles of sodium. So I want moles divided by liters and I have moles. So we got part of this, but not the other part. Uh, now I need liters. The question asks for the final concentration. Well, the final concentration, we took 349 milliliters and we added that to some other solution, 27.2 milliliters. This is math I have not done yet, 349 plus 27.2 gives me a grand total of thirty seven points, uh, thirty, 376.2 milliliters or 0.3762 liters. So this is my final volume. I added them together. The question asked me for final concentration. I therefore calculated a final volume. What happens in the end? What happens after I have mixed everything together? What happens after I have added my volumes together? So this is the sodium concentration after everything's all done. Divided by 0.3762. Zero four one eight eight five five point three seven six two. Now, one thing that we're going to be guessing on here is, so we started off with this 0.12 molar solution. There's 350 almost milliliters and we added like 25 to it. We didn't dilute this by very much, so our final uh, concentration should be pretty close to point one two. Because yes, there is more water in it, but not by a lot. Uh, so final concentration, 0.111 more sodium. So one of the things I would recommend whenever you're doing various problems is to keep an eye on the units and to break those down into pieces. So when you're trying to think through this and it asks you for molarity, remembering that molarity is moles divided by liters. If it asks you for molar mass, molar mass has units of grams divided by moles. If it asks you for density, density usually has units of grams per liter. So any of those units always look fancy when they're all together, but everything's really just has two different things, it's a ratio of them. So breaking them down into pieces and being like, cool, this thing sounds really fancy, but in fact it's just the moles divided by the liters. So all I have to do is find my moles and I have to find my liters. This does mean that problems that are asking you for these values usually will require multiple steps, because it's not, because you're, you're looking for two different things, right? So you need the number of moles and you need the number of liters. So you have to find both of those values. This, by the way, is also part of the reason why when someone asked about equations and I kind of grimaced and I said, oh gosh, we'll try, but I'm really not sure. This was part of why, uh, is because I, we just did a titration problem that was also a solution stoichiometry problem. And then rolled that one into looking at final volumes. To me, there were actually no equations, zero. There were technically to me, no equations in all of the math that we just did. Because everything we just did was using the definitions of the units. I used them like they were equations. But to me, those were just using molarity. In a bunch of different ways, but all we were doing was using molarity, um, and going in and out of molarity. And then using a little bit of, um, a balanced chemical reaction. And then we added some volumes together to get a final volume. That's, so to me, there were actually no equations, even though it was a lot of math, right? Bunch of math. I, I don't know which of those you actually classify as equations. So I'm going to scroll back up to my list of questions, but I've also been talking for a while. So I'm also going to ask for some more questions once I take a quick glance at where I am. So we did a titration, uh, we did ions and reactions, final solution. We talked about what to memorize, uh, I have avoided all the equations, whoopsie doops. Uh, we did solutions stoichiometry, um, so I, no! Sorry, I'm going to close one note and reopen it, um, because it's threatening to do bad things. It's about right, it's been about an hour and a half. One that does that to me after an hour and a half, alright, so I have answered no questions off the 2019 exam. Um, and I have not managed to do anything that required an equation. Great, that's supposed to be sarcasm, by the way. Um, so, other questions, let's take some more questions and see where I am.
Okay, so I think the next question is, are the correction terms to pressure and volume in chapter 11, theory or are we expected to apply math to it?
That was the thing I talked about with real gases, um, so that was down here. Um, and theory, the answer to that question is theory. No calculations about real gases, theory only. So we talked about that, we did that, so.
Next is, how to find oxidizing slash reducing agents?
Okay.
What else? Uh, for gases, you explain the kinetic molecular theory and the word problems regarding laws, like the Boyle's law.
Okay.
Next is, can you go over the key points regarding, uh, enthalpy, especially equations and how to solve them in the third ways you mentioned?
Okay. What else?
Next is, do polybasic bases produce hydroxide ions in a side, in a stepwise fashion or a non-stepwise fashion?
Okay. What else? What else?
Is someone says, I couldn't find these assigned end of chapter questions for this exam.
Okay.
Um next is, so is acceleration a path function?
I don't care. So the question is about acceleration. Um hate to tell you, but that's a physics question. Um we don't really, we don't use acceleration very much in chemistry. So that that is a wonderful, excellent question. But honestly, I am not gonna spend the time needed to talk about what acceleration really is to answer that completely at an exam review. So excellent question. That's a good office hours question. I won't answer that here. What's next?
Alright, next is um someone asks, what is entropy and can you go over a bond entropy question?
Okay.
And leave this last one. Um next one is, can can you do question twenty five on the practice exam?
Sure. Um.
Leave that's all for now.
Cool. So. Oh, so I'm gonna fix you in a chapter question problem real quick. Um so first of all, um. If you're in my class, which I realize that everybody is, um I have a I have a section that says outside of class, still on exams. Uh that's where I put all of my stuff. Um but I was actually looking and usually this has been copied over to the uh seven oh one section and I don't think it has been, so I will do that. Right now. Um yes, this is what the backside of e-learning looks like. I am so sorry. Uh da 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 da, course on page. Sometimes I think it's nice to show you guys what the backend looks like, just so you can be like, really? That's what that looks like? Every, every once in a while, um I think you guys have really good hope for what we do have and don't have. Um. There is, and I, and I, and I love it. There's there's something that's going through the uh work that student government is working on as an initiative. Um and the idea behind it is great. Um but. Part of it assumes that we have a system that does what they want and gosh, I hope they're right. Um I really, really sincerely hope that student government is correct and that there is a way to make the system that they want work because um. I doubt, I doubt, but I've been wrong before and hopefully the guide boys are really there. Um anyway, so. Uh I just stuck, if you guys didn't see it, um I just went ahead and stuck on the seven oh one section, the end of chapter questions. Right uh under the syllabus. Ah, we'll move it to the top. So if you wanna refresh the page on the seven oh one section, the end of chapter questions are at the very tipi top of seven oh one section. Um, cause yeah, I I have to admit, every instructor puts them somewhere else. Uh I know where I put mine. But I don't know where everybody else puts theirs. But now it's in seven oh one section, so everybody has it. So. Donezies. Um, so. So the question, so I can answer this question about dibasic bases quickly. Um so the question is, uh how do the hydroxides come off in a dibasic base? They come off all at once. Um so this is one of the interesting things about bases versus acids is bases, strong, strong bases. Strong bases. Um. So strong bases are ionic compounds, which means when this thing separates, the whole thing separates. Because these are already ions that were being held together. By the fact that barium has a positive two charge, the hydroxides have negative one charges, and they were being held together. By coulombic forces, ionic coulombic interactions. That's how they are being held together. So when they let go, they all let go. Um now, in reality, it's a little bit more complicated than that. But we'll get to that in chapter thirteen, which is not in this section. Um because the more complicated than that also has to do with the percentages. So you're just gonna assume for now that they all come off and they all come apart all at the same time. And most of them do that all the time anyway. Um if you're curious about what I'm talking about, chapter thirteen, which is not in this semester, covers ion pairs. Um so that's the other thing I'm alluding to are ion pairs, but that's a chapter thirteen problem, not right now. Uh so you're gonna assume that they come off all at once. Uh the other thing, uh the poly, the polyprotic acids don't. Uh this is though because uh acids ionize. Uh so acids ionize, which means that they are breaking covalent bonds. Since they are breaking covalent bonds, um they were held together with covalent bonds, uh and those covalent bonds are breaking. Um so they are ionizing, so they're actually breaking covalent bonds in acids, so they're gonna do that one at a time. Um you'll come back to that idea in biochemistry, uh also in organic acids and and genchem too. Acids and how they work will come back over and over and over again. Uh but strong bases separate completely. Um weak bases do different things. You're not gonna worry, you're not gonna see a polybasic weak bases. Actually in genchem, period. Um we'll, we'll wait for you guys to get to organic to do polybasic weak bases. Uh polybasic strong bases, sure, barium hydroxide, all at once, no problem. Sorry, this is the point where I look at the time and I look at what I have left and I have to make some decisions. Um. So. Yeah. Um. So let's go ahead and do oxidation reduction agents and we'll do entropy. Um so much as I can and the amount of time that I have. So first of all. All are gonna see this equation a lot because this is also the equation that I pre-prepped for entropy. But we're gonna use it for oxidation reduction right now. These are all gases. Steam reformation of methane, part of how you make hydrogen. Um thanks to the Department of Energy for their help in getting me this equation. Um so. The goal is to find, we're gonna find all the things. Uh we're gonna find the species oxidized, we're gonna find the species. Reduced, we're gonna find the oxidizing agent, uh and we're gonna find the reducing agent. In order to do that, I need to put oxidation numbers on everything. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna just go from left to right. So here's methane. Um hydrogen is on that table nine point five list, it's positive one. Carbon is not, this whole thing needs to equal zero. I already have a plus four contribution from the hydrogen, means from the carbon, I have a negative four. Water plus one from the hydrogen, oxygen is negative two. Both balances out and it's what's on the periodic table, works out really nicely. Carbon monoxide, negative two on the oxygen from table nine point five has to balance the carbon, everything is zero. Positive two, negative two. Hydrogen, gas, zero. Oh, I might be sorry I did this example. Oh, I'm, oh, oh, this is, we'll deal with it. We'll deal with, we'll deal with my mistake in a minute. Um, so. So these would be listed a little bit interestingly. Uh so when I'm looking for things that changed, my carbon. Changed, my oxygens did not. Uh so my oxygens go from negative two to negative two, so my, I don't care about my oxygens anymore. The hydrogens are the other thing I care about. So my carbon. Went from. So my carbon went from negative four. All the way to positive two, so this was my carbon. So since it did that, negative four to positive two, it became more positive. It is losing negative stuff as it does that, is losing electrons. That's the thing, it's oxidized. So what's oxidized, we're gonna label this as. The carbon in methane. Um and you might also see this on an exam, you might see this written as methane. Now, whatever is the species oxidized is also the reducing agent. Now, whenever you see the term agent, this is where we typically use the whole compound. So a lot of times when we talk about the species oxidized, we often label the element. To be specific about the thing that was oxidized, the element that was oxidized. But when we say agent, we're usually going to get to the shelf and grabbing the whole thing. So the reducing agent needs to be the thing that lets the reduction happen. It's gonna be the thing that therefore. Um supplies electrons, so since it's giving away electrons, it is the reducing agent. But since it's giving away the electrons, it's losing the electrons. So the reducing agent here should be methane. The species reduced, my hydrogen goes from plus one or plus one to zero. So the species that is reduced here would be hydrogen. Now, this is the part where I have gotten myself into a bind. Because my oxidizing agent. When I glanced at this, I really thought my oxidizing agent was just gonna be water, but the weird thing is is that. The hydrogen in both the methane and the water is getting oxidized. So honestly, we couldn't actually ask you about the oxidizing agent in this particular reaction because. Both the water and the methane. Have oxidation potential because of the hydrogens. So this is a good example that I chose poorly. Um so I'm not gonna answer the oxidation, the oxidizing agent question because really I wa- I want it to be the hydrogen and we could. We could say that kind of sort of, um and you could also make it the argument that the water is the oxidizing agent. But honestly, on your exam, we just wouldn't ask you for the oxidizing agent in this equation. Um because. It's too complicated. Um because it's the. Technically, it's the water because you would wanna have one whole thing, but the hydrogen in both the water and the methane is being reduced. So. So much for using a simple example. But at least you can kinda walk through how we figure out which is which, we assign oxidation numbers, uh and whatever is the. Agent. They're, they're flip flops. So the species oxidized is the reducing agent, the species reduced is the oxidizing agent. All of these answers, by the way, all of these answers should come from the reactants. So while you can say say things like the element carbon or the element hydrogen. Those are, all of those are still coming from the reactant side of the equation. So no matter what, we list things as if they were from the reactive side, even though we analyze the products to get there. Last go around. Or do entropy. Cause I don't wanna figure out how to summarize kinetic molecular theory in fifteen minutes. Um. Actually, my, nope, nope, I committed, committed to entropy, we're doing entropy. Okay, so there are three ways. To find the entropy of reaction. Uh that we covered in class. One of these is Hess's law. Singular. One of these are by using delta H of formation, which technically is just an expansion of Hess's law, and the last one is bond entropies. So Hess's law, this is the one where we're going to give you lots of reactions. And you're going to add them together. Delta H of formation, this is the one where you're going to have a table. That has delta H of formation values on it. Bond entropies is the one where you're going to have a table. That has bonds in it. Like carbon to carbon. So these are the three ways, these are the ways you're gonna know, you're basically, you're gonna know what to do based on the information given. The information we give you will tell you what method to use. You'll be trapped. You won't have options. So, for example. If I gave you that reaction that got me into such a pickle. But I had grabbed it because it was relatively simple and it was gonna work out really great for. Entropy. That's what I grabbed this for. Um. And the information given looks like this. Little table. I rebooted my computer instead of typing all this out and now I have regrets. Uh joules per mole. Negative two forty one point eight. Negative two eighty five point eight, negative one ten point five. Uh and the prompt is just calculate. Standard entropy of the reaction. This, those are the only instructions. You have this information, instruction say calculate delta H of the reaction. The end. So what you're going to do is look at what you're given. And when you see what you've been given, there's this little tiny F right there. That little tiny F. Means formation. And that little tiny F means that you are going to calculate using. Final minus initial or products. Minus reactants. So what you're gonna do is take all of your products. And. Minus, ah, that plus three H two. Minus all of your reactions, pros are my products minus the reactants. D H four plus water. Now comes the part where we're gonna use the table. So my carbon monoxide is negative one ten point five. Times three times hydrogen as a gas, which is not in the table. Huh, what's missing? It's missing on purpose. We will do this to you on exams. Hydrogen as a gas, that is its element in its standard states. Part of what you're responsible for is the definition of a delta H of formation reaction. Um so. Anything that's an element at its standard state is just zero. You'll know it's zero because you should know what some of these are. You can also know it's zero because it won't be in the table. Uh so while it's a little bit of a cheat, uh if something's not in the table, take a double check, it's probably an element. It's just zero. Um so you should multiply it by three, but it it's it's just zero. Um methane, negative seventy four point eight five and water as a gas. As a gas, which means I need the value as a gas. Make sure it matches. I am a jerk uh who will give you extra information when I write exam problems. Um so this problem has two different values for water and you need to choose the correct one. It just has to match the state symbol. But do make sure it matches the state symbol because yes, I would do that to you. Uh this is one of those times where it's like, I am a nice person, but honestly, we all have cell phones and cell phones will give you the whole internet. And you need to be able to figure out what is information you need and what is information you don't need. That is a skill. Positive two oh six point one five. This is in kilojoules per mole. That's, that's my answer. Do we finally do an equation? Does this count? This product minus reactants counts as the, counts as this equation? Do we finally do an equation with after an hour and fifty minutes? This might count. Um, okay, so there's, there's my answer, calculated entropy. So that was delta H of formation. But what if it doesn't look like that? What if it gives you the exact same instructions? Calculate delta H of the reaction for this reaction. Hey, hey, um, it's very important that I read my notes correctly. And then it just says, uh, one half D plus A goes to C and that has a delta H value of fifty kilojoules per mole. And D goes to B. And that has a delta H value of negative twelve. And that's all they tell you. That's it. And you have to figure out what to do. You're going to use the information they gave you. Because I have whole reactions. Because they gave me whole reactions. This is Hess's law. I have whole reactions. All I'm going to do is I'm going to go from left to right. So I need two A. Why look? There is A. But they only gave me one A. I need two of them. So I'm going to take that equation and multiply everything by two. So two times one half is one. So that's D plus two A goes to, to C. Whatever I did to the reaction, I also will do to my delta H value. So this delta H value now is a hundred because I multiplied fifty times two. Then moving from left to right, uh, the next thing I need is B. And there's B, but I would like B to be on the reactant side. The reaction they gave me is on the product side. So I need to flip the reaction. So this isn't going to be B goes to D. When I flip the reaction, I need to flip the sign. I used all the reactions, what, but I didn't actually finish going from left to right. Uh, then I had to see, oh, I already used C. Oh, look, I already have it. Um, so I already used all my equations, already used them all once. That should be everything. What should be happening here is I should be able to get rid of the Ds. My Ds cancel. And when I add everything together, I get two A plus B goes to two C and I add these together. I get a hundred and twelve kilojoules per mole. So this is the part I actually wanted, the positive one twelve kilojoules per mole. That's an example of Hess's law. Manipulate equations, whatever you do to the equation, you also have to do the value of delta H. You have to keep everything together in that set. Last but not least, we're going to use the exact same equation as earlier. This is why I got excited about this. Uh, and why I thought it would just answer all of my problems and it did not, obviously. Gas, gas. Yes, only now we're going to give a different table. Ten seventy, it's supposed to be a triple U. One, two, three, triple bonds, double bonds. Single bonds. Four sixty hydrogen. Four, come on. Four thirty six point four. So, and the instructions say calculate delta H of the reaction. Did you notice a trend? The instructions are all the same. Calculate delta H of the reaction. Here's, here's a goal. Here's what we want and just calculate delta H. Go, my friends. Um, so here, what we have is we have all of this like CH business, but there's no whole compounds. So that is a bond. So this is going to use bond entropies because that's a bond. Not a whole, not a whole equation, not even a whole compound, not even a whole molecule. None of that's here. These are all just pieces. So these are going to be bonded full piece. So most of these, so this is the part where yes, you are going to need Lewis structures. Now, the thing is, is that we're going to keep these relatively simple. That's the other reason why I pulled this example. You can do these. These are all formulas that keep the octet rule. There's no exceptions. There's no resonance. Strict octet, you can do these. Um, and when I say you can do these, I guess what I should say instead is these are fair game for this exam. Uh, because there, there are things we wouldn't do because time is limited. But these are all small molecules and these are also molecules that keep to the octet rule really well. Um, so these we will, we would do. So I am going to go ahead and draw these. So I've got methane and just one water going to carbon monoxide. So that one, it might be worth thinking through. I've got four valence electrons from carbon. I have six valence electrons from oxygen. That's a grand total of ten. So bonded together. I have eight electrons left over, two, four, six, eight. That is not a complete octet. So I'm going to move an electron pair in there because carbon loves to share. But I still haven't made my octet yet, so I'm going to move another lone pair in there. There we go. Everybody's happy. Satisfied octet. And then there's one other product. What is the other product? Hydrogen. Okay, so I just have one of those and then I have three hydrogens. One, two, three. So when you're doing bond entropies, what happens? I need to analyze all of this. Uh, I have four CH bonds plus two oxygen hydrogen bonds on my reactant side, on my product side. I have one carbon oxygen triple bond and I have three hydrogen hydrogen single bonds. So I am counting one, two, three, four. Four. Uh, I am counting one, two, to get two. I am counting one, two, three to get three. So there is counting, I am counting all of the bonds. Sometimes that involves in multiple molecules. Sometimes that is within the same molecule, but I am counting all of the bonds. Now, here's the part that sometimes makes people a little upset. My reactants, this is bond entropies. I am breaking all of my reactants into little tiny pieces that requires energy. So everything that is a reactant is positive because it requires energy to break them into individual atoms. Cause in bond entropies, I break them into individual atoms. My products are being formed. Being a molecule is much more favorable than not being a molecule. These are all negative. So it releases energy when you form a molecule from individual atoms. So breaking everything into individual atoms on the reactant side requires energy. It's all positive. When you form the molecule from individual atoms, you release energy. Releasing energy is exothermic. That's negative. So I'm now just going to pull the numbers out of the table. So I've got carbon to hydrogen as four, one, four. And yes, I know that I am over time, but I really wanted to do all three of these. Uh, my oxygen hydrogen, I'm, it's four sixty. Um, I am actually going to cheat and just look at my notes now. Um, because I did all this math earlier. Um, I, I did give you guys a lot of extra numbers, but the carbon oxygen triple bond is one thousand seventy. And my hydrogen is four thirty six. So I did also give you guys numbers you had to ignore. Again, because I mean like that. So sixteen fifty six plus nine twenty minus ten seventy plus thirteen oh nine point two. I don't know how many of y'all remember from class, but I made the comment at one point. It's like, man, anytime I skip algebra steps, I always get asked questions about the algebra steps I skipped. So no skipping. Equals positive one ninety six point eight. Should also be in kilojoules per mole. Okay. So one of the other things that I did do on purpose is when you guys look back at these notes, what you may realize is I actually used the same equation that we used in heats of formation that I used in bond entropies, but we actually got two different numbers. So using bond entropies, I got a hundred and ninety six point eight. When we did this exact same equation, but I used heats of formation, I got two oh six. Now those numbers are actually pretty close to two oh six and one ninety six. That is actually fairly close to each other, but they are different values. The reason why we cover bond entropies last in class is because it's the least accurate method. Heats of formation and Hess's law use real data and use exact data. Bond entropies though are using averages because we had to have a carbon hydrogen bond, an oxygen hydrogen bond. And there's a lot of different molecules that have those in them. So these reactants were average values. Technically, the products were actually real, real values because there is only one molecule that has a carbon oxygen triple bond in it and that's carbon monoxide. So that's an exact value. Hydrogen single bond to a hydrogen. There is only one molecule that does it and it's that one. Um, but there are basically, there are some inaccurate, it's not as accurate to use bond entropies as it is to use any other method. So it's the reason we cover it last in the textbook. Oh, and that's why we cover it last in class and it's covered last in textbook. Same thing. So I understand that I did not answer all of the questions. Um, now one thing I did do on purpose, so for those of you that asked me questions about the 2019 exam uh, and are frustrated that I didn't answer those questions, I understand your frustration. I did actually however, do that on purpose only because I assume that there are some folks that have not yet done the 2019 exam and I didn't want to spoil it for them. And I kind of figured we would have enough topics to carry me through two hours without those. Um, so I will be making that follow-up video. The nice thing about the follow-up video is I'll cover all the topics. Uh, and then I'll do the 2019 exam questions that have been asked. So that way anybody who hasn't done the 2019 exam yet can pause the video. Uh, it's, I didn't want people to either to have to decide between having a 2019 exam spoiled for them or uh, having to leave the exam review. So I waited on those. Uh, so I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that I did actually save all the 2019 exam questions for the follow-up video on purpose. Um, so if we run out of questions, I would have done them. I, I just kind of assumed we wouldn't run out of questions. Um, and I think I still didn't do something else. Um, kinetic molecular theory. I didn't do kinetic molecular theory. I had a real world problems with all the different gases. So I saved gases too. Uh, that's because we're going to cover those uh, tomorrow in class. Also then we'll do them in the follow-up video. So you guys will still have that too. Um, but I, I did, I did make those choices purposely. So I'm going to assume that all the questions that are in the chat are going to be large questions that I will save for the follow-up video since we're already over time. Unless you guys have something that you know is quick, but otherwise I'm going to assume that none of them are quick.
There is
Oh, what is that?
There is one question that will probably be quick. Will there be a key to the latest workshop?
Yes, uh, my apologies on that one. Um, I fully, basically I made the key in color so that it would be clearer and then I never got back to campus. And the app I use on my phone typically to upload keys copies, everything in black and white. Uh, it's the Dropbox app. So I just thought I would be back on campus. Um, because there's also other things I owe people, like copies of your Scantrons that I haven't finished yet either. And I anticipated being back on campus, uh, and that did not happen in the past week for a variety of different reasons. Uh, so I apologize for that. Uh, that is actually one of the first things I'm going to do when I'm back in my office on Monday morning. So it'll actually be posted before you guys uh, get to class on Monday.
There's one, sorry. There's one other one I think that will be quick. Uh, will we have to know gravometric analysis or just acid base titrations?
So gravometric analysis, so here, here's the weird thing from the gravometric analysis. Uh, gravometric analysis is oftentimes tied to a limiting reactant problem. So gravometric analysis is something that we will not test you on because gravometric analysis usually involves a limiting reactant problem. And we decided as a team that that's just a really long version of all the other stuff we ask you to do. Um, that being said, gravometric analysis has some really nice examples of solutions to a geometry. Uh, and solutions to a geometry is still an option. Uh, so that's one of those odd things that you might still take a look at it because solutions to a geometry, we can absolutely do. Uh, but gravometric analysis pretty much always involves limiting reactant and that's why it's not covered is limiting reactant portion.
Sweet. Um, I think the other ones will be questions that are better for your follow-up video.
Okay.
Um, so thank you, Dr. Taylor, once again, for another great gen chem study session. And I'll get you those questions ASAP.
Perfect. Sounds good.
Have a great night, y'all.